We opened this meeting, so this is a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen. The meeting is being taped by Area 58. We start with the pledge of allegiance. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to do that?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or a no. But you may have this. Okay. We only have one issue want tonight, and it is the Action Plan for MBTA Communities, which we started talking about in our last meeting and decided to hold this extra special meeting so that we can get some more information. And so I think the way we'll handle this tonight, and I'm sure everybody's here and has something to say, we'll hear it all. But we'll start with a presentation by the Old Colony Land Council, Ms. Donnie Folgenetti, who is a senior planner for them. And she's provided with us a PowerPoint that Cody will operate and will allow you to start for us and tell us what this is all about so that we all know what we're talking about. So if you would.
Sure, thank you. I appreciate being here tonight in your beautiful town. I live in Easton, and I'm chairing the Select Board in Easton, so I understand all of the concerns and I understand the perspective of the board and people in town. All the communities, all the MBTA communities and adjacent communities are working on this now, so I have work experience, real-life experience in this. So the state came out a little over a year ago with this law that has to be complied with, and what they want to do is have the development be within a half mile of the commuter rail or other train stations. Then there's adjacent communities like Easton and many others that don't have any, we don't have any public transportation, but because we're in the middle, we also have to find a place to do the same kinds of housing, which is a little bit trickier to figure out how to do that. And then there's some detail to how that is, how dense the housing should be and so forth, but for the simplified version for here, you'd be looking within a half mile of the train station, and it'll get into some of the details there. I guess the overall concept of this is that right now, there are certain compliance pieces. For instance, the action plan is due tomorrow, which is basically kind of a question in the air about what is your town doing on housing? Do you have, you know, any of this or that or whatever? And it's kind of an informational sheet. You have to have that submitted to saying interim compliance. And what that means is if you're not in interim compliance, you can't apply, the town can't apply or won't get granted any state grants. That includes Masworks, which is the big infrastructure grants that are millions of dollars to help with infrastructure. It includes other smaller grants, but it also includes a little bucket of money that impacts your housing authority. And that's something that a lot of people, including myself, didn't know when that started. And they are, if you read the Globe article, a couple of towns are getting noticed that they're going to lose a couple hundred thousand dollars towards the housing authority. So that's something that's concerning to me. Now, you'll go through this process. There's a compliance tool that you can request technical assistance to use, and basically it's like a what-if scenario. What if we put the housing here? What does it do? What if we put it there? What does it do? And at the end of the day, you're going to come up with something that you want to propose to town meeting, and it would meet the compliance, and town meeting has to vote on it. If town meeting doesn't vote on it, it doesn't happen. So there's still a lot of control for the people. And I'm so glad to see so many people here tonight because this is the time to have input on it. When, where do you want it? You know, where do you not want it? Do you want it? Do you not want it? So a lot of people don't come out until after the project is done, and then they're concerned. So congratulations to everyone for being here tonight on the front end of it. So if we go through, this is a pretty long, dense, lots of text. I want to just kind of skim through it and just pull out some important pieces to it. So the idea is that Massachusetts, you know, you read it everywhere, that we have a housing crisis, they call it. We're bringing a lot of students to this area because we have the best colleges and universities. They come here to study, and then they leave, and they take all of their expertise and technology because they can't afford to live here. And older people are finding it harder to find places to downsize. There's just not enough diverse housing for people. And so that's where this came from, and it was really with the goal of if we're going to put housing or bring in more housing, what's the best place for it? And so the consensus amongst the policymakers is the best place to put is around public transportation and have amenities there so that people, you know, not only, you don't want to put your housing like way out where it's not connected to anything that you have to drive a car to if you have it in places with public housing, I mean, with public transportation, with little grocery stores and coffee shops to kind of create like a little village that most of our communities look like back in the olden days. So this is the timeline for the compliance, and it ends in January 2023. So presumably, you'd get it on a fall town meeting. It's probably, it would probably be a heavy lift to get it on spring town meeting. I think in Easton, we're looking at a fall town meeting. And then getting the action plans in. So this, this is, you know, the important part here to notice. I highlighted it on another one that I have. So you have to have at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right. And it has to be without age restrictions, suitable for families with children, have a minimum growth density of 15 units per acre, and not more than 0.5 miles from a commuter rail station. In an MBTA community that fails to comply, shall not be eligible for funds from the Housing Choice Initiative Grant Fund, the Local Capital Projects Fund, that's the one that impacts the housing authorities, or the Masworks Infrastructure Program.
So if we vote no at the town meeting, we will forfeit all those?
So.
Hang on a minute. Let's, I'd like to do this, but if you, if you need a pencil, we'll give you one if you want to write your questions down. And then let's, let's go through the PowerPoint so we're all on the same page, and then we will take any comments or questions as they come along.
So this is just what the math looks like about what the different categories of communities are, whether they're rapid transit, commuter rail, adjacent community, or adjacent small town. So Halifax is a commuter rail community. And this is just a little, kind of like a little recap of what I mentioned for the land area, the percentages and the deadlines. This is, so this is a zoning change. It's not a building change. So what that means is that you might say there's already housing in a certain area, and you might put an overlay over that and say that's going to be part of the area where this new zoning would apply. It doesn't mean that we're, you know, we wouldn't want you to tear down houses and start over. It's just that if there was going to be dense housing, it could happen in these areas. So that's just, they want you to look at it and treat it as an undeveloped parcel when you're going through these calculations. And then the areas of developable station area, this is all just calculations that will go into this compliance tool, which is a fancy spreadsheet that you put in numbers, you put in the address of the parcels into this tool, and then it, it has a wizard that comes out on the end that it's out whether it's in compliance or not. So just to describe what multifamily housing is, it's a building with three or more residential dwelling units, or two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential dwelling in each building. So they come in all different forms. It's not necessarily the big giant apartment building structure. Some of them, as you can see, they could be duplexes, small cottages, townhouses. They can be different designs. If you work, if you work proactively, what I found in my community is if you work proactively and you seek a developer to partner with, they'll work with you to really have the housing be built in a format that works with your community. So for instance, in my town, we have a lot of rock walls and stone walls and historical buildings. They have built or renovated historical buildings to blend them into the community aesthetically, and they can do a really nice job of that. So there's a lot of selections there. Site plan review can be required, asked for this, but it can't impose unreasonable requirements. So you can't say, we'll do a site plan review and then make it so it can't feasibly be built. And then mixed-use development can be allowed and incentivized, but it can't be mandatory prerequisite. So you can't tell the developer, it's by right, but we're going to force you to put commercial in. It's allowed, but not necessarily mandated. And then energy efficiency, these came from, when they first rolled this out, the communities and the public had a right to weigh in, and a lot of places said, well, if they're going to build, we want them to be energy efficient. So you can't require them, but you can do things to work with the developer to see if they will do that cooperatively. So there, this page really just kind of talks about the feasibility analysis that's included into, into the compliance tool. So inclusionary zoning could be included, different program exceptions for the 40R, and then feasibility analysis exceptions of affordability. And for the compliance, again, these are the same deadlines that you saw before. So for commuter rail station, the compliance deadline is the 7/31/24. And this is just to talk a little bit about the compliance model. So I don't know if you plan to apply for technical assistance. There was already a technical assistance grant fund. OCPC got matched with six communities. So we have a GIS database person that'll be looking through. GIS database is a tool that looks at all the parcels. It will pull up the data. It goes into the zoning checklist, which is the spreadsheet I was mentioning before, and then a capacity estimator comes out. And that's, that's an overview of the technical assistance. There's some webinars that are online that talk a little bit more about that for your purposes. And the introduction to the section 3A, there's tools that are on there talking over the whole of that technical assistance. So the appendix. These are just some definitions, close to the definition between rapid transit and commuter rail, and adjacent community and adjacent small town. I think, I left those in there because I think it's important for the selectmen when you're reading it, just to kind of have an idea of the big picture of all of it. It talks a little bit more about the district's location and what that looks like. There's contiguous, contiguous, thank you, requirement. So what they don't want is, yours really have to be within 0.5 miles of the commuter rail, but if you couldn't, because say you have a giant squaw in your water and you couldn't get the capacity that you need because of that, they'll allow you to look for a little bit outside of that area. But what they don't want communities to do, especially adjacent communities, is to spot someone and say, we're going to do two acres here, three acres there. They want it, they have to be connected if you're going to take them outside of a certain area. And this is just a little bit more on the technical assistance and where it comes from.
Switch to the other one.
Yeah. So the other one was just to give you a little bit, a couple of the tools, and I wanted to put in the links to what was on there. So the first tool, this is called Residency, and it's by Mass Housing Partnership. So if you go onto that website address, you can pull out certain areas. So that is the area within a half a mile of your train station, and it gives you on the left, you'll see that it tells you how many units are in there and so forth. So if you were doing the GIS on the compliance, that's what you would start with. You'd exclude the areas of water, or if there's other, there's a list of, there's overlays on that. So there's a list of things that you can exclude, and then you would put those parcels, you pull those parcels addresses out, put them in the compliance tool, and then it would do its work. But that's, I thought this was just a good visualization of what that looks like, and you can play around with it. You know, this is the area you're focused on, but other towns might want to move that circle to other areas and say, what does it look like over here? So the same, the same thing with this is another one. It's called TODex, which is for Transit-Oriented Development, and it's just another tool to be able to see what the density is. So you really don't have any density in this area at all. It's all single-family homes. So it's just another way to look at it. This was something that I just spoke about when we went through it, the timeline deadlines. So the, the action plan is due tomorrow. The compliance tool is next that you're going to work on. Once you decide what you're going to do with it, you are going to want to have your bylaw amended, and that's what town meeting would vote on, is the amended bylaw. And then once that package is all done, the full compliance submission would be December 31st, 2024. And those are just, these are just some things that I pulled out just for convenience. The first one is really just, it's the whole page of every piece of this, every, every facet of it with the links. The action plan is submitted page that you'll want right away. You've probably already done that. So that's right there. And then for technical assistance, there are not, there's nothing open for technical assistance now, but the forms still work. So I would recommend that you fill that out and send it in, and if more technical assistance becomes available, you'll be on the list already. And that's just our contact information.
Okay, so between you and Cody, what is it exactly that you want us to hold on to?
You'd be allowing us to submit the action plan, in which the action, action plan, Donnie, feel free to jump in at any point, is really us saying, we're going to investigate implementing this zoning, identify where to, where to put it, and then bring something before town meeting. So you're not committing to, to anything other than investigating where you would do it and if you would do it at this point. In that investigative process, like Donnie said, we would apply for technical assistance, and we would envision it as having public workshops where residents of the community could come out, voice their opinions on, you know, if they want it, if they don't want it, where the, they feel the best thought would be for it. So it's really, it's a, it's a planning process, but we would look to garnish the public input.
And as far as the location of, this has to be within a half mile of the train station, the only place we can talk about, or the only place we're supposed to talk about.
Right. That would be the only thing that keeps you in compliance.
Okay. And if we file the plan by tomorrow, what does that do for us in terms of our, in terms of anything? If we don't file it, then we're out of compliance and we're not available for certain funding. If we do file it, what does that mean?
If you do file it, it just means you're in compliance and you're eligible for grant funding, and then you'll start working on this. So that's why it's important. There was another period before this, another checkpoint before you were all on the board, and I think Halifax missed that one, that there were three things that you had to do to stay in compliance. They're, they really want to work with the towns on this, and so they gave this other opportunity, even if you were out of compliance, we're going to give you another chance to get back into compliance on that. So what I recommend to other, other towns and cities is just do these milestones along the way. You're not committing to anything. You're exploring it. You're looking at it, but it still keeps you in the game if you do want to apply for these grants.
And can you give us some sort of a rundown? I've seen some of them, but so everybody knows what we're talking about in terms of grants. What are we talking about? Is it something we're never going to see?
No, it's, it's the funding that Donnie touched on. The one, the larger one is called the Masworks Grant Program. So that's infrastructure grants. If anyone's interested, you can go on, just Google Massachusetts Masworks. And you can see what other communities have done with this grant. It's millions of dollars. It can be used for things like water or sewer upgrades, road improvements, various different things. So, you know, it's definitely a large opportunity. And then there's also the Housing Authority funding as well, which Donnie touched upon. And then there's some other smaller funding that isn't applicable, but those are the two that are applicable to Halifax. And that is right now. You know, what we're hearing from the state is that could be expanded upon to include potentially all, all grants. Right now, it's just those, so that's what we're working with, but you know, that, that may change in the future.
What's the housing authority grant that we have now?
It's just, it's state funding for the housing authority.
So that would be gone?
Either gone or substantially reduced.
So there's state funding, and then there's a little bucket of funding called, where is it? The Local Capital Projects Fund, and grant funding comes out of that to augment what the state already gives the housing authority. So it's, it's not millions of dollars, it's a few hundred thousand dollars. It's, you know, it's still, your housing authority can't afford to lose any money. None of them can, you know.
Is that a annual thing?
Yeah.
Yes, all these grants are annual.
Before we open it to the audience, has anybody on the board have any questions or comments, or you want to take comments now or what?
I just had a couple for Donnie, if that's okay. Donnie, so the half a mile, where's the, it's a small thing, but where's this, how do they have the center? I mean, is it, what part of the tracks, like, do they have a delineated half mile from? Is there any wiggle room as to where on the station you have?
It just makes the center of the train station.
Okay.
I will mention too, you know, the state recognizes that communities are in different positions, so I just pulled it up here. They're, in Halifax in particular, they require that 40% of the district be located within that half mile. So you'd have to zone for 40% of the 750 units, and the other 60% can be, you may have a little more leeway outside of that half mile.
And then back to compliance. Let's say we, we agree to investigate this, we submit our, our thing tomorrow, we stay in compliance until the end of 2024, regardless of what happens at town meeting?
Well, if your town meeting passes it, then you meet compliance. If your town meeting doesn't pass it, then you're not in compliance.
And from that refusal of compliance at town meeting on, you're then not in compliance, and then again, not eligible for these grants.
Yeah. And like Cody said, there, there are going to be more things stacked onto that. I'm confident to say that.
Sure, as far as penalties from the state for not being in compliance. Okay. And then the other thing too, can this, can the state change any of the rules of this game?
Yes. Are you there?
Okay. No. Just wanted to, just wanted to make sure, because I mean, again, I'm totally fine with just investigating, but I don't want, the rules changing where the state is now has the ability to force us to do any sort of actions.
They can't. I mean, you know, the, they want, they want to, they want to strongly encourage communities to do it. So they're calling it a counter-identistic kind of approach. So they, they are trying to do it in a way some people feel it's every-handed, some people feel it's proactive. But at the end of the day, if all the communities come back and say, we're not doing it, they're going to, they're going to layer on something else.
Or they might change their mind. So that's all I have.
On the, on the voting part of it, so, I mean, we have an annual town meeting in May of 2023. There's no way you would be prepared for that anyway. So we might not.
I mean, you could, but you'd have to have, you'd have to like jump on it now and have a lot of meetings and stuff, so.
I would sue that.
It'll take our time.
So that would mean we'd have, the next annual would be May of 2024, so we'd have a year and a half to study it. And if we decided in the spring of 2024 that we still weren't ready to make a decision, we could schedule a special town meeting November if we wanted to, and if we decided we were going to adopt it, we'd adopt it then. So we really have almost two years, yeah, we would be current eligible.
Correct.
All the eligibility was made until December 31st of 2024.
And again, this, just to reiterate, this is just changing the zoning. It is not going to change anything that you have in your housing at that point or not. But if you did say have a big vacant lot in there, and you changed the zoning, and somebody wanted to buy that vacant lot, they could then put the dense, you know, the multi-family housing in there, so.
That's if we decide to vote that yes.
If you decide to do that, yes.
On that point though, the zoning itself, we could structure the multifamily district to address issues like parking and open space and, you know, that kind of thing, I assume.
Not really, no. It's, it's just looking at the zoning for the housing, so.
Well, we'd have to have more to it than that. We couldn't just show up with a 10-story apartment building, right? So we'd be out of control of that.
No, there's some other nuances in there, so you'd be able to control that. You'd have site plan review to work collaboratively. I'm not really sure, I'd have to go back and look at the details of the parking, but it doesn't, it doesn't supersede some of your other bylaws, so it, it works with that. So that's part of drafting the bylaw, and it's an opportunity for you to look at the bylaw at that time and see, you said that there's a bylaw review team now, if they wanted to change things in that. Say, say you made an overlay district and they wanted to change things, you know, I don't know, parking or whatever some of those were, as long as it's not something that's created to make it so that you can't have the housing there.
Donnie, not that matters, but I know we're out of compliance right now. Do you know any other communities in the area that are out of compliance as well? Are you familiar with the towns around?
Yes. I think, well, Whitman, Whitman was out of compliance because they were the one that was mentioned in the Globe. Plymouth is not in compliance, and I think it was just the three.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments or statements?
I have a question. Hi, Donnie.
Before we go any further, because you, I know you are, but would you just announce your name? The reason for that is this is recorded, and even though Pam is taking shorthand, we actually have the whole thing transcribed, so the minutes are accurate as well.
They're cracking down on our identifications.
Karen Pava, 66 Clydeo, Lasbourn Grove. Hi.
It's best if you ask me, and then we'll be, otherwise we, because you know what happens when you're in a heated debate.
Right. So my question is, if this is a 40R project?
No, this is not a 40R. This is completely separate from a 40R. 40R is something you can do to come into compliance. This is a different, this is 3A zoning.
Okay.
So 40R is different. This 40R exists throughout the state already, and the town could adopt 40R at any point if they wanted. But this is, that's a way for you to come into compliance, right, Donnie? You could adopt a 40R, but this is not a 40R. This is, this is 3A zoning is what it's called.
Okay. And if we were able to send a letter, be in compliance, and pick a location, and we don't have enough per se space, the 40B project that we're have on projection right now, would that also help to bring us into compliance? Because that also has, will income, affordable housing?
It could, it could not, because it hasn't been approved at this point, you know, we don't know parameters. But where that 60% could be outside of the half mile, it may. I can give you a definitive answer, we just don't know, but it could.
It's also, that project is also an issue because we don't have a 10% affordable housing to start with. So it's kind of like a launch to that question that, you know, is kind of on both sides of it.
Right. Well, it just seems to me that, you know, a lot of the bylaws that you're speaking of that we have set in place as a town, that the state can now say, well, we're going to supersede you, and we're going to go in and we're going to do what we want. And a lot of the builders, but if that happens, I think what I heard was that anyone within that half mile would be able to do whatever they want, that they wouldn't have to follow our existing bylaws.
Not necessarily. So the, the goal of this process would be, we would undergo a thorough review, work with the residents, our boards, committees, to identify a zone within a half mile. It may, it may not be the whole half mile, but somewhere within that, that you can put this zoning. I don't, we don't know what the state will impose in the future. They, they may impose something like that in the future. They have not at this point, so that could change, but at this point, they have not imposed something like that.
And it's not going to override, like, if you have wetlands there, or if you have something like that, it's not going to allow building in the area that's not being built right now?
You had a question? Yes, ma'am.
Erica Rossini, 60, Aron Road. Where did the 750-unit number come from?
It's a state, it's a state mandate. So they want... So they want you to have a minimum of 50 acres and they want you to have 15 units per acre of density. So the 15 times 50 equals the 750.
And currently for the grants that you were speaking about earlier, the one for the infrastructure, how much do we typically get?
It's a competitive grant, so you submit projects to apply for. For instance, we have a wastewater project that is going on. It may be something that we look at potentially applying for that funding for. So they range in amounts, it depends on the project. It's a competitive process, so you may apply and knock at anything. You could, there's some communities that apply for, you know, one to $2 million. There's some that get $50,000, it really, it varies.
Do you know the history of Halifax has been like, do we?
I'm not sure that Halifax has necessarily taken full advantage of it in the past.
And then you also spoke about the housing authority one. Roughly how much is that per year that we get for that grant?
I don't know, that varies too.
Are we talking like a hundred thousand or are we talking like a million?
No, not in the millions. It could be, it could be in the hundreds of thousands, but my guess is it's lower than that. It's a, it's, they use it for their capital projects. So housing authorities get their funding from the state and this is additional, the local capital fund, I think it's called. It's additional funding to the housing authorities.
So our housing authority here in Halifax is just like maybe, I think it's like six buildings down by Route 58. Is that what that, is that the only area in Halifax that's considered housing authority?
That's the only housing in town, yeah. Housing authority in town, yeah. There is actually a land that Mr. Shea knows all about that has the potential to be housing authority, but has never been developed.
And then can we, through all this and research and can certain properties already established in Halifax be entered, low income or such as like our trailer home or the house, you know, is any of that included?
I think what you're doing is, just like Karen, we're kind of talking about a whole bunch of things at the same time. So we have the, they call it affordable housing issue, which is already mandated. It's supposed to be 10% of our housing stock is supposed to be what they call for. It doesn't necessarily mean, well, we come just into the limit.
Right, yeah.
And as an aside, the mobile home park never counts for that. That's really the state defines it, right, it defines it. So we're, we're in there to talk about that, but it just seems passive. And then as far as the other areas in town, so I don't get the zoning bylaw myself. You can put multi-family residences in any district except industrial districts. There's a special permit process involved, which can become an issue if you have a 40B proposal like we do over here on 58, is if the town turns it down or they appeal to the state housing authority. And this is, they started to write a law, especially for that. So right now you could put any parcel of land except the industrial park could potentially be multi-family developed.
There's no specific affordability component to this, to this particular zoning. We could require it, right, Dottie? We could require affordability in this to an extent?
You could require it, but you could work with them. And there are some, there are some details in that presentation that talks about how you do it. So there's a way to do it, but it can't be required.
But this isn't affordable housing, this is strictly just grid or zooming. Units, yes, housing units. Yeah, it could be, it could be.
I think Dick Steele, I think it's for nine Clyde O'Loisworth. I'm trying, I'm a visual learner, so I'm trying to just get a feel of what, what this would look like. If we use Twin Lakes, I don't know if anybody here knows how many units there are. 220, 220, I'm looking at 750. And then I looked at the visual that was up here on, it showed you 10-story, high story buildings, three triple deckers and so forth. And it's my understanding that, I mean, you can probably look, I guess, any way we want, if we have any kind of hole or say. But I'm looking at that and I'm saying, okay, 700, again, I'm looking at Twin Lakes, 225 and three times, three times the size of that, I'm just, I just, yeah, I just can't, I mean, I just can't see where we go and then how it impacts everything else, including the, you know, the road, the main road that goes to and from that, the little choo-choo train that will be very small with everything surrounding it and where all these stores come into play and like the use of water and the use of, you know, schools, all those things start to come into play. But the number just, and then, and again, I don't need to be going off in directions, but then you look at that 40B and I think that number was pretty high too. Yeah, and so now we're not Halifax anymore. It's just something that, just throwing it out there as if anybody else wants to kind of speak on it.
That's there, behind Mr. Seating.
Hi, Scott McKee, deal you with? Where I live, I'm pretty much in the bullseye. Behind my house is conservation, are you touching conservation, Dottie?
No.
Not at all, you're not touching any conservation.
If that conservation land is restricted, then no, that won't be.
Peterson Swamp, is that restricted?
What's that?
Peterson Swamp, that's what they call it.
It's a wildlife refuge.
The conservation land is, I'm listening to questions.
Can they build one?
Oh, can they build on the swamp?
Just to, just to clarify, I think maybe a misunderstanding. This is simply, we look at the zoning, it may not be in that area. That's what the town decides, the town decides where the zoning would be within the half mile. So you know, it's up to the town to decide. Any, any restrictions that are in place would remain as far as conservation. That, if it can't be built on, it can't be built on.
Now, I'm with Coach Steele here, I'm trying to put this in my mind. Where the, where are you going to put 750 units a half a mile away from this? Where?
Just to answer, because I know this is going to keep coming up, but how I'm reading this, that this is kind of like a little bit of an opportunity for, the state decided that this was a good idea. We didn't decide that, you folks didn't decide that, but the elective representative in the area said, okay, this is what we're gonna do. But what we have here is an opportunity for the next almost two years to investigate it with all of those kinds of issues and to, I see it as a defensive move more than anything else. So if we don't, if we don't do anything and just let it pass tomorrow, then we've kind of given up the opportunity and control, potentially control at least what we can vote on, right? And that's, that's how I'm looking at it. We just, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that we're going to get ever to the point where we see a, a good idea of, you know, five-story apartment building anywhere. I just don't see that and I agree with you, I live in Halifax for a reason and that's part of it. But this is something that the government is just telling us we have to do. And so I take it before, so on our part, if we don't at least, at least investigate it and try to set it up as best as we can, that's kind of how I'm looking at it. So I know Mr. Shea got his hand up.
Right. You know, saying to, and to Mr. Steele also, John Shea, by the way, 530 Thompson Street. I don't know how many people in this room know where the Halifax Garden Company used to be, okay? And if you know, and if you know where the Halifax Garden Company, that could fill up, that's 500 houses real quick. So if you know about that, if you have any, well, if we vote for this and we review it and look at it, we can probably, you know, who knows what's going to happen from, but that's an area. I don't think a lot of people are aware that it's, it's there and what it looked like years ago. And it was wide open area, wide open. So anyway, I don't know how many people, I came here 55 years ago and about 53 years ago, I got on a committee. And a committee, believe it or not, it was all townspeople here. It was how's your town growing, how's it growing and how would you like to see it grow? The train still existed, but it wasn't functional. 495 was in the workings, but it wasn't connected. And the biggest thing we had after we got through with this whole big committee thing, matter of fact, I still, I think, I can dig up the old papers, is that we'd like to have home rule. But since those 53 years, we don't have home rule anymore. The state is dictating exactly what we can have and when we can have it and what we can do. Between Title V, Chapter 40B, the whole 90s has changed everything. So we really don't have any say anymore on anything. They dictated a year ago what's going to happen. And I'd like to see the committee, you know, vote on this so that at least we can explore it for the two years. Who knows what was going to happen? And with that, like somebody just said, the carrot is out there. And that's what they're doing to us. They're telling us, you can do what you want, but you're not going to get this if you do it. And, but I think 50 years ago, we were talking about what we'd like to do and have home rule and decide what we'd like to have, with some, you know, input and help from the state. But it's gone way on the other side now. And now we're here at this point and.
I would suggest that anybody who thinks that if we simply just turn this down, that the state's going to leave us alone is just delusional because it's just never going to happen. This is true bad question.
Amy Truitt, 10 Hillside Ave. In the guidelines of the 3A, first of all, it states a lot about the MBTA, multi-housing as a right. I'd like to remind everybody that we do not need to do this and we won't be in compliance for certain grants. But that would be as NADIC, NADIC is right on the MBTA site and you might have seen it if you peruse this, which I hope you did. But they got an $800,000 grant for their schools. But that $800,000 grant doesn't really mean anything. Why? Because their school costs $78 million. So it's like having a $10 gift card and having to buy something for 75 or a coupon, if you will. It doesn't really do anything. And in the meantime, you're going to throw all the other people that live in this town out of their homes by applying for grants and raising the taxes on everybody that has lived here in the 3,100 units that we have in Halifax. And to get further on to that, the site plan review is going to be squashed with this. And so that means that basically the guidelines similarly recognize that the site plan review may be required for a multi-family housing project that are allowed as a right. Within the parameters established by the applicable case law, site plan approval may regulate matters such as vehicular access and circulation on a site and maybe some architectural design and screening of adjacent properties. And that's it. So all of our other bylaws, our parking and everything else is out the window because we will not be able to impose conditions that make it infeasible or impractical to proceed with a project. So we would be denying, like Mr. Shea said, everything. So I understand the whole idea of looking into this, but looking into this is meaning that we're going to put hundreds of units in a town that cannot support it without building new schools, new middle schools, adding to our police and fire, getting new buildings, adding to our police, fire apparatus, because we're not going to have that. And then anybody who's having problems in our town, which we know there are a lot of people who are having problems in our town with the affordability, need I go over them again? We have the trailer park that's having a problem. They're in, looking to figure out how they're going to take down trees that are going to land on their houses and don't have the money. So in my eyes, spending money on meetings, especially a special town meeting to have a vote on this in November, which by the way, Clinton did, and I'm sure that most of Clinton doesn't know yet that they're in multi-family zoning now. And that was done in November with 29 people. So again, we're going to spend 8 to $10,000 on having a special town meeting to look at something when we're all here and these are just the people that know about this tonight. And then you look at a planning board meeting full of people saying, we don't want this overbuilding, but yet we think it's smart to get grants that, by the way, if you read the grants, in order to get the grants, you have to be engineered and shovel ready, which means the town would have already had to spend the money to do it. So where are we actually going to save? We're not, stop on the grant, the threat, don't take the threat. Eventually, we're going to be able to overturn it because we're going to watch everybody else not have enough water, not have enough room on their roads, not have enough room in their schools and we'll be the smart one who didn't jump off the bridge because somebody was literally threatening us to do so. When we know that what happened in the 80s with 220 units at Twin Lakes and 110 or 120 over at Lydon Lane threw us into double sections of school, sending elementary schools to other towns and having major problems, which we already have gone through. And subdivision control came in in the 90s. Subdivision came into, into our state to protect us from the over density, which now they are circumventing. And then they're going to take away all of our rights. We bought property and we're taxpayers. We want to keep this town the way it is, don't look at the carrot. We're not really going to miss anything because the grants that you're looking at are not even enough to supply the schools.
Thank you. Can I just ask you real quick, on, Amy on NADIC, right, with the $78 million school, did they vote to, to accept this plan? Is that why they had to? So if, so if we didn't vote to accept this plan, it would, it wouldn't be comparable to NADIC in that instance?
When you go to a store with a $10 gift certificate or a coupon and you have to buy something $75 to use it, that's basically the money you're looking at. You're getting a $10 coupon for something $75. $800,000 for a new school at $78 million is a drop in the bucket. You know how much that would make the taxes of every individual person go up? And we have tax defaults that, Karen, how many tax defaults do we have? We have senior citizens that live in a mobile home park that can't afford these things. So to explore something that the town is expressly at all the meetings saying not to, just to figure out that we don't want to build apartments in vacant lands to get grants we will not get unless we're shovel ready, which means we're spending money we don't have again. Push it down the road.
Okay, now Mr. Winowitz and Mrs. Steele.
Chris Winowitz, 129 Circuit Street. I remember two or three years ago, we had hired, well, we had said some of our existing bylaws, we could help guide this, possibly. We could stand by some of our existing bylaws through this process?
What's your, can we stand by?
I think when she was explaining, some of our bylaws could help us in the process of what they could do, what they couldn't.
Well, we have zoning bylaws now that do address multi-family buildings. They're permitted in every district except the industrial district, but they do, there are, there are very exciting changes.
I know two or three years ago, I remember watching the Zoom meetings, we had hired an outside lawyer that specialized in looking at bylaws and redoing them. And right off the bat, he seemed to identify that our bylaws are so old and haven't been redone in so long that there were certain paragraphs that conflicted, there were certain bylaws we have now that has been case law decided since then, fits on the bylaws when you can stand, someone went against them. Do we know where our bylaws even are now?
So we do have, we do have now, Miss Truitt's on it, at the zoning bylaws committee, I think it's called, which point is to review the bylaws. I don't know, I mean, I'm supposed to go, I just haven't been able to get a meeting yet, but I, I don't know how far along they are. But that's already a committee that's in the, that honestly should be considering this also, that's what might be. So, but we do have that committee now that does that. I don't believe they have any professional help.
That's what I mean, if we have an expert that knows all case laws and the way you would write it, whether it's standard or not.
Let me ask Mrs. Truitt, she's here, can you tell us, what's the status of that committee?
We have, we're up to face, sorry, Article 3 and we do have town council. And just so that Chris knows, site plan review will be waived if, so any of our zoning bylaws won't stand any longer. So all of it would be sort of null and void.
Dave Rossing, 60 Irland Road. So if they don't count the 220 plus and the 40B that they have and another 750 that were quote mandated to have, we already ran into water issues last year with a massive ban pretty much the entire summer. So if we build all this stuff, is the state going to give us water when we can't meet our water demands for the citizens that live here in town? Because we seem to forget, we need water to live, but we're going to build, we're going to, that's a massive amount of people that we will be adding immediately to town. town. We already know we have a water issue, whether we believe it, we haven't. So it seems like we're cutting our handoff to appease people that don't even live in this town.
Well, I don't know that.
And I didn't get to vote on this mandate of building, it just seems like we're knocking trees down, building a house and where we want it in the state. It's just crazy when we're forgetting, without water, we die. And we're going to build, we're going to add all these people into this town. And personally, I don't want to be drinking brown water. I don't want to get into water routes where we have to share or not use water because we brought all these people into the town. I don't know, it just seems crazy.
It's a good issue, but right now, you can put multifamily properties in town that, as we know, what they're trying to do over on 58 there.
It's, it's. We're not for that either. It's that, that's a burden.
I'm not saying it is a good idea, I'm just saying that.
But it's just that people, there's so much outside influence that's trying to tell us what to do. Maybe we need to get in with finance committee and figure out a way to work our budget so that if the town wants to spank us, or the state wants to spank us, we'll figure out and pay, do what we have to do with the money we have. That's the other thing. It's getting in this town where the taxes, it's crazy.
Mr. Steele.
Dick Steele, 900 Wuthera. Two questions that are, again, scenarios. Number one, it's a shame, and it's not your fault, it's the board's fault. It's a shame that all of a sudden, you know, there's the date tomorrow. You know, and again, it's the way things had happened and the whole bit, but I think that's part of this problem, we're feeling like on edge, we've got to do something, we got to do something. The other thing is, I've been in town here almost 30 years now, and in the last six months, I've been to more board meetings than I have 28 years. And that's a good thing. A lot of people still, we're almost all the same people that are here, I'm seeing that, you know? And there's so many people that don't know what's going on. I mean, there would be 300 people there. If they had, if you could use a school email and say, hey, there's a meeting tonight about talking about, you know, what a possibility of something happening, I don't want to jump ahead because I understand, hey, we vote, it doesn't mean anything really, we can back out, all right? But I still think that we're not getting a really good sense of the parents who have kids, of the elderly, of, you know, it's, it's, we're not doing it right, not getting somehow the word out. Because again, I think for every person here, there's 30 out there that would be here and hot. People, I was just, I left the gym and I said, wow, I'm one of those, and I thought it was a 40, and it wasn't a 40, I was a 3A, I thought I was a root 3A. I don't understand, you know, so maybe the people over there didn't realize any of it. They didn't realize that, oh, you kid me, that it's not the 40B, it's just it. So again, I think we really have an issue with trying to get the word out, and I don't have that answer. The only thing I do know is the school, they can bang out 600 emails and everyone gets the message.
So one of the, one of the things about this process, and I think you saw it on the slides, is that there is room for public comment in terms of, you know, the whole process.
The whole process.
The whole idea. And I mean, obviously, we've got enough people interested in this issue on short notice. We only have a lot of last week and it was, you know, probably should have been handled a year ago, but that's more under the grid. So, but again, it seems to me it's a defensive thing. If we, if we, if we take this step and say, okay, let's study the issue, and then we hold the public hearings, and we have the proposals, and we look at the things that Amy Trup's talking about, you know, is it really worth the money? Is it worth this, is it that? And then we also look at the idea of, well, suppose we don't get in conformance by December of 2024, what's, what really happens? Nothing. In which case, it just falls away, maybe something, in which case, we have a decision. But I'm always of the opinion that if we were investigation, we'd want something better. And I just would hate to cut it off at the gas here when we don't do it after. But it's not like if we put this in tomorrow, that now we're going to get a 750 unit project downstream. It's just not going to happen. But what, what might happen is, you know, if you put this in and, you know, six months from now, you have all your folks and you have all your concerns and all those 30 other people that each of us represents, there's all their concern, and, you know, we'll do what we have to do for the public hearing and do all of that, and try to make a rational decision about it. But, you know, what, like you pointed out, we're trying to make a decision on kind of a real short string here. And it just seems to me that the most logical thing to do would be to study the issue. And we're buying ourselves almost two years' worth of time to do that. That's how I see it. I'll tell anybody else.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you study the issue? Can you vote it down and still study the issue?
Yes.
Because that would be our, can you vote it down and then write it back?
If we don't submit this, we're out of compliance. But if we submit it, we're in compliance, then we just continue this, but we don't, but again, if we submit it and we don't, and we never do anything about it, you know, in two years from now, we never do anything about it, then we're out of compliance. It's just like we turned it down. I mean, it's really, I just don't see the downside, other than I get the whole concept of, yeah, you know, we don't want buildings, we have water problems, we have the taxes, we have all of those issues that are, that really come up every time we have something. I mean, how long does it take you to get out of Route 106 now with the traffic, right? So I, but that's a significant issue that comes up every time with this. And at this stage of the game, I don't see that we're committing to anything other than investigation, which again, I see no real harm in investigation. So before I get back around again, one, please.
Lisa, 257 Home Street. I apologize if this was already mentioned. Does the state set its zone down to start looking at areas that would be buildable or does the town look into it?
Would the state do it or would we do it? We would, we're being asked to investigate whether or not we have, we would rezone property within a certain radius that would suffice to be a, we'll call it a multi-resident district. So state's not going to do it for us, they're telling us we should, we have to do it.
John? John Shay, 530 Thompson Street. Now, if you vote, if you decide to go ahead with this project, and we have until November at our town meeting to vote it, and yet you said we have two years that we can explore this, if by chance it gets turned down at the town meeting in November, do we have a chance again later on to have another town meeting to vote for, before the two years are up?
I suggest that this November, but we really don't have to, we don't have to decide until December of 2024.
Okay.
So if, say, there's no way, considering all the interests, there's no way we're going to get this done before May.
Okay.
Frankly, we don't have the time to do it. But even still, would we be having it ready for even next May? I don't know.
Okay.
Either way, we can get, we can stretch it out until December of 2024.
That's confusing because you said vote in the fall and then if it get turned down.
Oh, next fall. Yeah. I was just suggesting that we, you know, I know we have an angle in May, but we can always schedule what we have to, especially, and we frequently do anyway, or, you know, there'll be other issues that come up and it's, you know, that's all part of the plan. But at this point in time, I don't really care that, you know, that's, so, I think, Mr. Winowitz and then Mrs. Steele.
So this half-mile overlay, it'd be an overlay starting from the center of the train station? Would that be a talk of existing neighborhoods? So like six years from now, a developer could come down and say, I want to buy the six houses on this street, tear them down, and now build big apartments?
Whatever we zone, is whatever we zone. We would choose where the zoning would be. So that's part of that investigation phase.
I think this question is, suppose that, I know it's true, within that half a mile radius, there are already existing single-family houses, so.
You know, a house on one of 1-4, they could lie.
Yeah.
They could come along and buy like half that street.
Right.
And put apartments because the overlay is over.
If we zone it there.
If we zone it. Not in the interim.
No, no, no.
It's going to be voted on.
Plus the people that sell houses.
Time to move.
Amy, Mrs. Beal.
Karen Beal, 66, 900 Wuthera. So that was kind of, my question was, are they allowed to take property under eminent domain?
Not yet.
That's a government function. And, you know, that comes up every so often, eminent domain. It is a really difficult process. It's long, it's, people don't voluntarily just give up their property, they fight you for it, and they fight you for the highest price. So unless it's something really important, big order, and the tax title difference, you know, so, you know, they're taxed, if that's a whole thing, but that's not what we're talking about.
Thank you.
Yes. Anybody else have anything else to want us to think about?
I have a couple of paragraphs to share. So we're going through this 40B over by 8358 because our affordable housing numbers are so low. Now we're looking to, that we could potentially put 715 units in that none of them are considered affordable housing. So, so that kills the number even more than what we are already at. So then what?
We can actually work with.
We could work with the developer to, you know, so there's a few different portions here. This is an exploratory phase you're implementing. If, let's say, the town voted zoning for this MBTA communities, the, they would still have to apply for projects. So a project would come forward to build 100 units. That's when you work with the developer to try to include some affordable housing.
So the developer.
So the number never gets to where it's supposed to be because the, so that, that project that's across from 8358, it's 235 units, but only 24 of them are going to be affordable, which already doesn't make our number anywhere close to what the number's supposed to be for affordable.
So with a 40B, not to get too much off the topic here, but with a 40B, typically 25% of the units are considered affordable, they count. And then if you do that, actually, all of the units count towards your subsidized housing inventory. It sounds strange, but with the states, the way the system is, even with the 25% actually affordable, all of them within the 40B count toward that number. So you get, you would get the full credit for all of them, if it's a 40B.
If it gets voted in.
Right.
Dave Russini, 600 Run Road. This is a little off-topic, but when they started the train up again, did the town Halifax vote to have a station or did the state say, we'll put a station?
Halifax train station in our historical society here could tell you, it goes back to the 1800s.
I'm just curious because if they said, we're putting a station there, and now they come in saying, oh, because you have a station, now we're doing this. I don't like somebody telling me what this is. And this is what's going on.
That's pretty good.
You'd really like to be in my house.
Well, you know what? Sometimes you've got to stand up. It's getting time to stand up.
The train station was part of the old colony line going back to the 1800s.
No, I'm just curious. I've only been there about 26 years.
When they reinstituted the line, they just put them back where they were. And again, off-topic, I have yet to see the advantage of being an MBTA community, which we are considered, because we actually get the cesspool. We have to pay money for this, even though I would guarantee you that there aren't five people in this room that use that train. So that's just the way the law is. I mean, if you want to change it, we're going to have to change, the open statehouse will change it. I don't have any say over it, neither does Jonathan or Najah or anybody, so. Yes?
Did you read the grants and the implementation processes and how you needed to, what you needed to do to get those grants and what they were for in order to prepare for this meeting?
Yeah, we looked through it. I mean, I didn't do it, I don't know.
I did. And you need to be shovel-ready. So that means you need to pay for an engineer, you need to get the project, you need to own the land, and then you can apply for the grant that you might not have. So we're not really losing anything.
Okay. I hear you. I know you told us.
Well, it's important because the exploratory time over the next two years is so that we don't lose those grants, which we probably won't get anyway. So to investigate this while we are not a part of it could be a wiser choice because complete streets, remember, in the obligation and the implementation plan, it made it so the Massachusetts Department of Transportation can now change any of our laws just by signing that document. So what you're signing here, I would read in, yes, read the document at complete streets and you'll see that. But you could be signing something that would take it away because if our site plan goes away and everything, and you're letting the DHCD now control all of our bylaws for our zoning, and even if it is just in a half-mile area, there could be some little red tape in that contract just by exploring. We don't really know enough information about it in order to put, sign those documents, in my opinion. And I think everybody in this room is also, or a lot of people, I know there's people in here that have land that would be able to be 40A that are here right now and want it to go through. However, we, as the town people who don't own that land, don't want it to go through. So we're begging you, I believe, I'm speaking for a lot of the people in here, right? We're begging you not to do this.
Anybody else have any other comments for us?
Jeremy, 900 Wuthera. I just did a five-mile radius from the train track. And basically, there's no available land. I mean, it's all swamp, or it's uplands adjacent to a swamp, or it's adjacent to a stream that's running to a public water supply lake. So, I mean, there's, there's just nowhere for, the reason the train tracks there is because it's the only high ground in the area, except for like that one little spot, maybe about 36, but it's not going to be doable ever. And I think there's going to be a point in time, especially as I've been talking to people in other towns that are really starting to fight this stuff and realize that like all this growth stuff the state's pushing on is, isn't working now. You're going to, we're going to have allies to make the state answer for its own laws that contradict themselves. You can't have clean water, a clean environment, and then be pushing all this growth and urban sprawl. At some point, all these towns are going to get together and make the state defend it.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay, all right. So also, I've heard everybody, believe it, I've heard this through 100 times, I understand everything you're saying, I just can't get by the idea that what we're doing is an investigation. And I feel like it is short-sighted not to do the investigation. We have a zoning bylaw study committee already. This could be part of their discussion, it should be part of their discussion, and be kind of a comprehensive review of where we are zoning. Somebody, I forget, it's maybe Mr. Winowitz, somebody else pointed out that our zoning bylaws are already inconsistent, which is some of the problem over at Manda Way. Our zoning bylaws are outdated in places, and I just don't see any reason why we shouldn't just take this, look at it, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work for all these reasons. And again, I think as far as the public input, once, once we start this process, you know, we will do what we can to advertise it as much as we can, and at least we'll have a little bit more lead time on it and so on, just like all the other public projects we do, such as the Council on Aging thing and everything else, and take as much input as possible on that. So I would move that we submit the, what?
The action plan.
The action plan. So that's the motion.
Yeah. No, and I don't think anybody here in this room or on this board would want to do anything that would jeopardize our town. And I don't think that by being in compliance at this stage, we are, right? We still have town meeting, we still have other steps that would need to be made. And I know it's for the grants, where we haven't gotten a lot of grants, not to put pressure on this guy, but in his former, in his former municipality, he brought them from a million dollars a year grants to $3 million a year grants. It's one of the reasons I fought for this guy to be RTA. I think we'll see an increase in grants. I do, that's just how I see it. So again, we don't want to make any decision that's going to jeopardize this town, but I don't think being in compliance at this stage of the game does that. I just don't. Okay, so I will, I'm, Najah, do you need any comments?
I'm with you guys. I mean, I'm 29 years, born and raised here. I don't want this town to change, but like you just said, in the five-mile radius, there's no way to put it. But to look at it and see it, be like, hey, it's already there, and then they go, oh, we can't do it.
It's half a mile.
Yeah, but Jeremy just said five-mile radius.
Or half a mile radius.
Okay, you have a half a mile radius.
That's what, it's a half a mile.
Half a mile radius. You said five.
You said five.
Okay, well, half a mile.
Point five. Point five miles. Bring it back.
All right, so we have a motion on the table. All those in favor say aye.
I'll second it.
Aye.
Okay.
Left-handed pams. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Again, I thank everyone for coming.
Absolutely.
We have heard everything you said. At this point in time, we'll be into the bylaw people and all to make their recommendations on it.
On purpose.
Good matter, whatever they come up with, that's what we're up to deal with. But I think, again, I see, really, really, to me, I don't understand the concept of not taking advantage of a year and a half period at least to look at, right? And for all these reasons, if it's a bad idea, it's a bad idea. If it's not buildable, it's not buildable. Thanks, everyone. So that's all we have on our agenda. Make a motion during your.
Some moves.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those.